All right. Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Education is now called to order. And would you all please stand and join us in the flag salute?
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no action taken in closed session. And we will now move on to item D, board meeting protocol, superintendent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Tonight, just before I start reading the board meeting protocol, I just wanted to take a few moments. I don't know, maybe even a moment of silence for the the families of Rob Elementary, the victims' families, the school community. It's just heartbreaking what that community is feeling right now and and the families. And, you know, of course, anytime we have something like this happen in our country, our nation, when it's at the schools, especially elementary and the young kids, it hits home. So thinking about all the teachers, staff out there, I know that's really hard, probably very difficult to come to work today, hearing all of that. And I think our staff are pulling together today too to support, whether it was staff or students or parents. So just condolences. I will go ahead with the board meeting protocol then for tonight. Our meeting is being recorded. The meeting is open to the public and we're being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comment, comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. And to make public comment via Zoom teleconference, please notify the board meeting assistant through the chat feature in the Zoom. Please include agenda item topic or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed. And you will be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. To make public comment in person, complete a public comment form indicating the item you would like to address. And that would go to our board meeting assistant, Ms. Bach. Email public comment can be mailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting and those will be posted to our website with the agenda. And email public comment is limited to 450 words and we have not received any email public comments for our meeting tonight. Board vote and connectivity, each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. And should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed five minutes and our board meetings, regular board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the next item, which is item E, recognition.
All right. Thank you. We have a few of those tonight. I would like to start with Haley Smith, eighth grade student from McCaffrey Middle School. Haley submitted five videos to the SIVA Educational Video Contest. They do this annually and a lot of some students might enter one, maybe two, but five is kind of unheard of. And then out of those five, three of them made it to the next level, made it to the finalist level. And so Haley, would you like to come on up or say a little something? We do have, we're prepared to show one of your videos. The smores, how to, you want, you can just go ahead to that little podium right over there. Yeah, she does K-Dog as well.
Yeah, I'm actually on crew this week for K-Dog. If you guys want to see, you guys can join our, our channel on YouTube. It's K-Dog News.
So Haley, what made you want to submit five videos?
Well, last year it was kind of sad because I, it was my first year making video and I didn't win anything. And I was kind of sad by it and I vowed to make better videos to try to win something and try to, you know, make our school proud and kind of known around Sacramento.
Good for you.
Oh, yeah. I'm not trying to take any credit, but I did go onto the basketball team for our McCaffrey Middle School. And we did really good as a team. We had some people who have never played before and we all did really well. And I did score as much as I could. So I hope made our team proud.
Good for you. So we'll show that smores video here. Going to make us hungry.
So while we're waiting for this one to load, why don't you tell us about the, the other videos that you uploaded? Like the concept, what gave you the idea?
Okay, so each like a couple like weeks every month, we have like a certain video category we have to make. From my teacher, Ms. Albert, she would give us like a category or like a grade we have to have for our video. Like PSA means Public Service Announcement. So it can only be 30 seconds about something public or like instructional, which means you teach people on how to do something. And like creative expression is something nobody would really think about and it's something that people can learn about. So during the school year, I would like get a camera, we would use a tripod, you'd bring some people in my classroom to different like places. And for like my PSA video, I did, I actually won a finalist award. It had one of my, my best friend, Af Karen, we went out onto our new track, which was really nice. And we like talked about like how to be really healthy, like to really, like, because I think kids need like a little bit of a boost to like get self motivated on to stay healthy. So we did that and it was fun to film because of course it was my best friend and we had a lot of fun doing it. But also because I love to be physically like, I like to exercise, I play lots of sports and that was inspiration for that. And then my documentary was about my brother. That one didn't win a finalist award because I put it in the wrong category. I was kind of upset about it. I put in instructional, supposed to be documentary. But I talked about my brother because my brother is being recruited by lots of different colleges for like different sports, like football and basketball. And we like had lots of B-roll, which is like clips of footage while someone's talking. And it went really well. My brother was proud of it. My family was so proud of it. Because this is like my second year doing video and I think I did pretty well on it. And then this one, I made it actually in seventh grade. So it was actually like a year ago, last summer. The Galt Teen Center, which opened up a couple, like a month, a couple of months ago. They did a competition for who could do the best video on how to make the most creative sandwich. So I tried to think of the most creative sandwich I could and some people don't really like this idea. Might be a little too much, but it's a small surprise sandwich is what I call it. It's Nutella with marshmallows, sprinkles and bread. So it might be a little much, but it's basically like a little kid's dream. My mom would make it for me in like first grade and I always tell her on the first day of school, Mom, can you make me that sandwich? I love that sandwich. And now I have a little sister and she's in elementary school and she loves it. She gets it like a lot and I get it too and it's really good. So I actually did win that competition. I won $100 in an Amazon gift card. And I'm really proud of that. And my other videos were good too. But I know they weren't good enough for the competition, but I'm still, I'm still proud of what I did.
Good for you, Haley. Thank you for sharing. And I don't, we'll see, we might still be having technical difficulties. Is it?
I'm sorry, we cannot access the video from here.
It's blocked. It's blocking YouTube.
I did watch it today. It's pretty awesome.
Oh, thanks.
City Hall's blocked. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it's unlisted. I could try to make it public today because I think I can make it public. It's how to make a small surprise sandwich.
And the link is in our packet. So if anyone's at home watching on Zoom and you have the packet up, there is in the, in the title there, you can click on the link and, and watch it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
I wanted to present with your certificate for all your hard work, Haley. And thank you for coming and sharing what you learned.
Okay, so who's next?
All right. Next, we have Mr. Ron Raymer. Get to say a few words about Mr. Raymer. He's been a middle school administrator in the district for 30 years. And it's pretty rare that you stay a school site administrator for that long. It's a lot of work, tough job. And Mr. Raymer has been at McCaffrey since 2003. He opened that school. And that is another huge accomplishment to stay, especially at a middle school for 20 years. You know, I think when I think of Ron, I think he stayed there because he loves the staff. And he loves middle school aged children. He loves to, to really nurture them and support them. And I think there, it was a challenge and a desire, especially being the only middle school in Galt, that you got to really touch all element, all seventh and eighth graders and at one time sixth graders too. You know, coming through the district and here in Galt. Mr. Raymer also, he was an assistant principal at Greer when it was a middle school and then principal at Morango Ranch Elementary as well. And so, you know, just, just an amazing career. And I also personally want to thank Ron for, of course, we were principals together for many years when I was at River Oaks. And he was, I don't know, kind of the, the leader of our, our team. And when we, I don't know, sometimes didn't want to speak up and say things, he'd do it for us. We'd turn to Ron, come on, Ron, you do, you be our voice. And he was kind of the unspoken leader and still has been for our admin team. So I appreciate that as well and just wish him the best and retirement and just made some amazing career here in Galt. So, thank you, Ron. So we have a certificate for you too. I'll wait to come over there and give Mrs. Gill hers as well. And we need to get a picture, Koi. Remind me to picture because they will, we'll send it to Bonnie. Bonnie said she'll put it in the paper and it'll be in the paper next week for you guys as well. Mrs. Donna Gill, she has been with our district for 15 years. She has been assistant principal at River Oaks and McCaffrey. And also she has been a special education educator in our district and most recently, the last five years at River Oaks. And I had the privilege of working with Mrs. Gill as an assistant principal when I was principal at River Oaks. And I was just honored and felt privileged that when I left, that she was going to, to take over. You know, the school that I was at for many years and she's done amazing things for our community and our students and staff. And she will dearly be missed as well and we wish her the best. And, and she's moving. She is leaving California. She's, yeah, it's exciting what she's doing. Her kids are growing up and going to be all together in Washington, right? Yeah, so just amazing, both of you. I thank you and want to give you a certificate. And let's take a picture because I want you guys to at least be in the paper.
The only co-principals in history. And we did it.
So just line up. That's right. After 30 years, it's pretty much.
So on behalf of the board and probably all the parents in this district, thank you both for, for that, you know, for so many years of dedicated service. I can definitely say as a parent, having the confidence of knowing, you know, YouTube being on staff and, and clearly as a board member, you know, having the confidence of knowing that you, you know, you're where you are at. I think really makes our job that much, that much easier. So we really do appreciate. We'll miss you very much, both of you. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item F, communication.
All right, we have our official positive certification for the second period budget interim report from our county. I just wanted to note that they are, they did note our decreasing ADA, our average daily attendance. We're not surprised that it was decreased by 462 this year, average daily attendance. And a lot of that was due to absences for quarantine and COVID. And then they are noting that we are expecting a slight increase for next year compared to this year because we are hoping not to have the amount of absences that we had this year. It's not because our enrollment is going up, it's because we're hoping ADA, average daily attendance, kids actually in the seats will be there next year. But then 23, 24, they're noting a decrease again. And that's really just based on our enrollment projections for the next couple of years. So that's what I wanted to highlight on this.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, then let's go ahead and move on to item G, reports. Superintendent?
Little bit more on enrollment. You can see right now, we wanted to share with the board what our enrollment looks like for Kinder and transitional Kinder for next year. We currently have a total of 382 Kinder and transitional Kinder students. And right now, our completed registration packets are at 292. That's completed. We have a few that are pending completion. It's a difference of 90 students. That is average for this time of year. We do expect to receive enrollments during the summer. So we are watching that closely, but we have reduced the number of Kinder classes that we have. For Morango, we've had to, we had hoped to have three classes, but based on only the, the 44, we have reduced it to two Kinder classes for next year. And then our, when you look at our total enrollment, the number of eighth graders that were losing to the high school, it really is larger than our incoming Kinder or TKs. And so you can see with this right now, our total enrollment, if we started school today in August, if it was August, we'd be down 74 kids. So we'll just hope that we have Kinders and TKs and maybe even some families and other gray levels that move into Galt.
Any questions or concerns about that?
No, I was just going to say with all the construction that's blocking us getting kids to school, that hopefully enrollment will increase. There's been a lot of growth, at least in the Northeast area.
Yes, yes. We're hoping with school age children.
Hey, go ahead and move on to the next report, LCAP.
So at this time, we are actively updating our LCAP. We're approaching the second year of a three-year LCAP cycle. We kept our two LCAP goals. We have refined and updated some of our actions and our services. We've been actively getting feedback from various stakeholders. Our next steps include to post our LCAP for feedback by June 3rd. And then June 15th, we have a special board meeting, a public hearing that would be for our budget and our LCAP. And then at our regular board meeting, June 22nd would be consideration to approve our LCAP. And I just wanted to highlight, we do have a summary for you of our actions and services right now. Under goal one, engaging learners through a focus of equity, access and academic rigor with inclusive practices in a variety of environments. We have 21 actions under this goal. I wanted to highlight the expanded learning this summer and the school program, the after school programs that we will be able to implement this next year with the extra funds. So we're really excited that we will have these programs at every school site next year due to the, the funding. And then I wanted to also highlight action number 15, professional learning. Some of the activities that we are adding next school year with Core Learn to continue to, to refine our reading, our literacy. That's both in benchmark and in SIPs. And then also bringing in some outside consultants for math, Eureka Math at the elementary level and CPM at the middle school level. And then also we highlighted in this action, professional learning for our administrative team, the contract that you approved last month with Al Rogers to help us develop and our leadership and, and share that with staff as well. And then our home learning action 16, I just wanted to share right now, we will have our home learning academy next year, although we're not required to have one, we will offer that for families. Right now, we have two teachers that would be teaching that program and we have 20 students that are, are enrolled right now for, that want to continue the home learning. Yes.
Do you expect that number to increase by the time the school starts? Or do they have to enroll by a certain time?
No, we didn't give a deadline, but we have already had numerous parent meetings and we've recruited in a few ways. I, I wouldn't anticipate those numbers to go up much. What would you think, Donna?
We have a, we have a Google form online and we've been getting, you know, one or two parents a week that have been filling out interest. And then our two current teachers, Megan Haas and Jill DeLuce, have been personally contacting the parents. I think it, a lot could depend on enrollment, could depend perhaps on COVID and the cases and, you know, health and safety in the new year. But I would imagine if, if we got to 30, I would be surprised, but that would be a good number.
And so LCAP goal two, I would ask Donna Whitlock if she would just give you a brief summary of our chronic absenteeism and our suspension rate with this goal.
Yeah, it's the promoting whole learner development through social and emotional learning opportunities in a variety of environments and chronic absenteeism. We know there's a lot of different, I mean, you know, besides the quarantining, there are a lot of different reasons why children don't come to school. Engagement, mental health, social, emotional, safety. The chronic absenteeism rate was, was quite high this year comparatively. And chronic absenteeism is students that are absent 10% or more of the days in the school year. So that would be their absent 18 or more days. This is perhaps in the eight years I've been a director of educational services. We've had students that have been absent for 30, 40, 50, 60 days. And so it, it's something that we really need to address in the coming year. Suspension rate is at 2% or it's 2% of our student population because the dashboard has, you know, was not able to be updated. So we are using only 2019 data, but in synergy, our district student information system, 2% of our student population were suspended one or more times. And that, you know, depends on schools. Some schools had one suspension, whereas middle school, which is a lot, there are a lot more students, a little bit higher. But truly the, those are the two main indicators for social, emotional health of students. And so we have, we have eight really important actions for social, emotional learning.
With the chronic, I'm exhausted, absenteeism. I don't know how much you can divulge, but is it the same families or could it be a situation where, because I know, I mean, I have some of my daughter's friends are out right now with COVID, which is like the last two weeks of school, which is horrible. Just, but so, you know, and I know they get it twice. So they're out like saying the beginning of the year for, you know, 10 days. Then get it maybe over the winter or again in just the cold, there's a random cold going around right now. That's horrible. Where kids are spiking fevers, but it's not COVID. Is there, is there any type of patterns of the chronic absenteeism?
I can speak to just the students that we've taken to the school attendance and review board, the SARB meetings that we have monthly at the police department. And those students that I think every school site has taken one or two students. And it took us a while to get it up and going. So it was January. And next year, we were ready to hit the ground running in September by looking at the students that we brought this year, if there's hasn't been an improvement next year. But I have to say, the students that we've taken to SARB have had quite a few quarantine days. But on top of the quarantine, say they've been in quarantine 20 days or 25 days, they have another 25 or 30 days of unexcused absences that they just didn't come to school. So I think those students are really chronically absent. It was more than just quarantine. And I have to say for the quarantine, especially at the beginning of the year, over the counter tests weren't readily available. So students, you know, they, they were out and you had to stay out for 10 days.
Right.
Unless you had a negative test. And, and I know at the beginning, the first half of the school year, when a student got sick, parents would just keep them out for the 10 days and then send them back. So I think.
Well, that's why I was asking, there's like a pattern. So I also know families, just even nationwide where one kid gets it. So then the whole family is kind of quarantined and then another kid goes down and it's like the quarantine cycle.
At the beginning.
And it goes for like a month as we have a large family and siblings.
And it, it has, but I would say.
I was thinking if there's a pattern or if it was.
You know, and, and even excused absences count towards chronic absenteeism. It's not just unexcused. And so I think that, that is probably the main cause of our rate of increasing so much to 28, to the 28%. But those students that have gone to SARB, on top of that, students just have not been coming to school. So we need to, to really monitor the students that we've taken to SARB this spring and bring, bring them back if we need to next fall. And hopefully it doesn't get to truancy court, but that's what we're prepared to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And then one of the actions I would like to highlight for this school is our, our multi-tiered systems of support. We will have a teacher on special assignment that will be supporting our efforts in this area. And we also just recently purchased a program called Beyond SSTs. And that program will help us house all the documents related to MTSS and the referrals and also our 504 plans. And so that was a, that was a change in our LCAP as well. So just, this was just a summary, brief summary and update of what we're working on right now. We will post it by the end of next week. Hopefully we'll get some feedback as well. We'll do all call email and we have a Google form that we'll share to get feedback from parents or, or community on our website.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and move on to LCAP goal one, item one, the 2022 May revision budget or May budget revision update.
Be me. Koi, do you have the PowerPoint? And then you guys all got a copy of the PowerPoint as well. So we can go to the first slide. So Friday, May 20th, the governor, well, not the governor, but school services did the presentation on the governor's May revise that had been released the Friday before that. And so I'm just going to go over some of the major themes of the governor's budget. So the governor's focus with his very large budget was to try to bring some relief for inflation, focused on public safety, homelessness, education, of course. The governor is also, if you've heard, and everyone's talking about when, when does the bottom fall out? When's the next rest? The governor is also, if you've heard and everyone's talking about when, when does the bottom fall out, when's the next recession, it's coming. And so he did some things in his budget to try to help with preparing for that as well. Next slide. So we show this one every time, this is just the brief overview of the actual state's budget. Total available resources, which is their revenue decreased by 11.18% while their expenditures only decreased by 8.77. So their revenue is decreasing at a greater pace than the expenditures. Next slide, you can skip because it's just the, we move on to two slides because it's that kind of divider slide. So the proposition 98 reserve is what you've probably heard of as the public school system stabilization account. They're required to do a deposit to that each year. So the deposit for 2223 triggers our own reserve cap. Next slide. What this means to us is that any unrestricted reserve that we have over 10%. The board will now be required to commit it. Currently, right now, we have what's called unassigned and assigned balances, those are the percentages you see at the bottom of the NYPD when I present a budget. And so now, if that's over 10%, you will have to commit. The difference from 10, say it's 15%, you would need to commit 5% to certain purposes. And committing takes board action where our normal assigned and unassigned does not. And so when we come in June, there'll be a resolution to commit the difference between what we do have in reserve and the 10%. It's still board controlled, it's just in a different section. To comply with the ed code. And so.
This is new, the board, we've never had to do this before.
Correct. So what's happened is, this has always been here, this has always been here. It's just that it's only triggered by the what the state does with their proposition 98 reserve. And so the ed code has always said, if this happens, this is what happens to you. It's just, this is the first time it's happening to us. So I did address it at the January governor's budget purple presentation I did. Because they they've been talking about it for about six months or so. So that'll be new, but.
Well, it's hard because. We had believe did a resolution or board policy a while ago or were attempting to to have our reserve added, you know. But I believe it might have been.
9%.
9%.
Was the goal.
The goal.
And at that time, it seemed pretty lofty.
Right, because.
Yes.
Because we had, I, because I know, you know, we do have to keep at least a 3% and then with the way. ADA is and you know, the government's governor's budget, how you know, every year it can fluctuate and now they're telling us what we need to do with this extra money, which. To me, that's like a savings, like, okay, so if we have to go back and do a recession or not back, you know, but if a recession happens. Like we have a pot of savings and now they're telling us that we need to. Like put it into a budget category, is that what I'm understanding?
You will commit it for certain purposes, but then you can take action to uncommit it and use it for something else. So if you say committed it for technology upgrades and then a recession hits. And you're like, okay, we're gonna now recommit that to minimize, to to meet our reserve minimum.
Yeah.
That's your, you can do that. And so that's what I mean, why it's still board controlled, but in like this other section.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Because it was very, because I'm really, I'm like.
Okay, I know.
Thank you.
So we'll see a new, you know, it'll be new, but it's still board controlled, you can still take another action to use it for a different purpose. And so it's not set in stone the minute you do it for one thing type thing. So you do still have that flexibility, it's just more formal with an action, a board action. Next slide. As you can see from this slide, districts reserves are are much higher than 10%. All of us experienced savings during covid, there was also. Few years ago, the threat of a reduction to school funding of 10%. So everybody, when when we hear that, we put the brakes on, right? Everybody stops spending, they get scared and they don't want to. Make their reserves go down anymore. And then covid hit. And the schools closed and you had some savings on things like vacancies, utilities, transportation, things like that, that you just weren't spending your money on. So all all districts are grappling with this and and having to do the same thing, take a resolution to their board to commit any funds over 10%. Next slide. And so as you've heard, I'm sure about the COLA, so 2223's COLA is projected at 6.56. And the next two out years are 5.38 and it's 4.02 in that last May box. Their slide didn't have that, it was a error on their own slide. So that blank box should be 4.02. One thing I will point out, as I did in January as well, is that. This COLA is strictly because inflation is over 8%. It is not an augmented COLA, this year our COLA. Was 1.7 and then they augmented that and gave you more. This is just trying to help mitigate the cost of goods and services right now that everyone's. Paying, including employers, all employers, not just public employers. There's eight factors that determine COLA. And so there's like the price index and all these different things. So throughout the year. Certain pieces become available and they start trying to calculate a COLA. So that's why in January it was 5.33, well, then the last two indicators came in and so now it's 6.56. So there's eight different, I don't know all eight, but off the top of my head, but there are eight that contribute to the final COLA number. Next slide. So we talked in January as well about the ADA cliff. And so I was kind of surprised to see 270,000 children over two years have left California. And so the decline overall in the state affects affects them and affects us. And so. Kind of like they say, a two-headed monster. And so if you go to the next slide. They're trying to, there's a lot of proposals right now in the legislature trying to mitigate this for us. And so right now, the current proposal from the governor. Would be to fund us on the greater of current year, prior year, or the average of three-year prior year ADA, trying to help mitigate. And for us, that was, everyone went from being funded two years ago ADA and then now all of a sudden. You know, you're declining enrollment, you have bad attendance rates, you know, it's just trying to help mitigate that. So the other thing they're trying to do is, since this year was so bad. If you try to do a three-year average, you have one really bad year in that three-year average and that math doesn't look nice. Right, it's going to bring it even more down, further down. So what they've also proposed is that for 2122. And I've spoke to this before where our attendance rate is usually 95% and then this year it's around 90, just because of the sheer absences. So what they would do is they would take your current year enrollment and they'd multiply it by that 95% instead. So you'd have a more even three years to do the average on. And so they've. There's some other proposals from Senate and Assembly Bill, but the governor's proposal. Is the one that that we've kind of built our budget on, which is what school services recommends. And so we'll see what happens, there's, there's definitely support across the board to help mitigate it in some fashion. Next slide is a divider and then we can go to the next one, there we go. So there's not a lot of detail in the trailer bill about. How the governor wants to inject 2.1 billion into the base grant of LCFF. And so what school services believes is that this is how that would work. So once COLA is applied to the base grant. Their estimates, and these are theirs, and there is no detail in the trailer bill yet. Is that then that additional 2.1 billion, those are the rates that it would equate to, and that would also be added to the base. And so if they're correct and based on our projection for 2223 ADA, that would be an additional 877,000 to our district for the year. Next slide. The other thing he's proposing is a one-time, and I stress one-time discretionary block grant. And that's estimated at about 1,500 per ADA. And how they estimate these per ADAs is they take that very large number and they divide it by the statewide ADA. And that's how they kind of get that and just so you, so you know. So we'll see, there is a lot of ideas about what to do to help us. The Senate has their own idea, the Assembly has their own idea and the governor has his own idea. Usually it's the governor has an idea and they either agree or disagree on it and tweak it, but this is, these are full-fledged, three different ideas. And so if the governor's passed, that would be a one-time $4 million. They also stress that you spend this on one-time purposes. And then they talk about what their intent of those purposes are, but they do stress that because it is only one time. Next slide. Special education is still set to receive COLA and have a base rate of $820. I like this little chart they did this time that actually shows you the base rate of the last couple of years. And so you can see we've really made some progress in the special ed AB602 funding and getting that base rate up. Expanded learning opportunities, which is the program that Jennifer presented to you on a few board meetings ago and we approved the plan. This is still proposed at a larger ADA rate than what we have now. So they're talking about 2,500 per ADA. Based on our calculation for our district, that would be about 4.4 million for the after-school program. Next year, the governor says this is ongoing funding, but. You know, ongoing funding is subject to state appropriations and who the governor is. And we know we have a governor's race this year, so just food for thought. Next slide. The other proposal he has is that we already have a grade span average and a grade span add-on in K through three for class sizes. If you keep your class sizes 24 to one, you get the extra add-on to the base. This add-on for each TK ADA would give us another $2,813 per ADA. Based on our ADA estimates for next year, that would be an additional 190,000. That TK ADA would generate. Child nutrition is still set that the state is going to mitigate the ending of the additional federal. Rate injection that we got, so they're going to pay the difference when the Fed's waiver expires. And so that mitigates a big drop in nutrition funding for us. Next slide. There's also some relief proposed for preschool. And that's things like fee waivers, funding us at the hold harmless for regardless of attendance, kind of the same thing. Child state preschool has to report attendance the same way that we, not same way, but like we do for funding. So that's kind of a hold harmless to help them out. And there was already the increase for students with disabilities and dual language learners from January. Next slide. Cal-Pers and Sturs rates, we've talked about these increases. And so there is an increase for Sturs to 19.1, which is a 2.18, 2.18% increase from current year. And then Cal-Pers went down a little bit, that was a little, you know, every little bit helps. So it was 26.1, I believe, now it's going to be 25.37, which is a 2.46% increase for next year. Next slide. So this is kind of the last little caveat for us. Minimum wage due to inflation is being proposed to, it triggers an increase. Again, next slide, so we can see a full picture for the next five years. So what that means for us is every year we have to potentially fix salary schedules to keep up with the change. And fixing a salary schedule is is not, you know, an easy feat. It's also a cost to us because the salary schedule starts here and it trickles down to everyone. And so those are costs that we're going to have to be dealing with. So it's not as easy as just changing the first number and and making it the minimum wage. And so those will be additional costs to the district each year that we'll have to. Bring to the board and discuss and be a part of the total compensation for each of those years. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Well, so I'm just curious about one thing, Nicole, because. Looking through the slides, it looks like there's this, you know, a lot of influx of money. But it seems like it's really just mitigating the loss due to inflation, increased costs. What are some of the costs that like we're having to absorb that have just gone up dramatically over the last couple of years? For things like food, transportation, I mean, what are some of the examples of of what's really costing us a lot more than it used to?
So during covid, one of the main things that went up was materials. If you remember, if you tried to get a fence done, you know, lumber, I'll shut the Canadian border, we have enough wood, you know, those types of things. So that was the first thing that kind of happened in covid was those types of materials. Then, you know, with China and things like that, exports, imports, getting things over, the backups at the ports everyone heard about. So then it was those things, we just couldn't get things. Sometimes it wasn't, they cost more in the beginning, they just weren't available. And then maybe you would have to pay more for them from the people who were price gouging at that point. Because when supply is low, that's what was happening. If you went to the grocery store, all of a sudden something costs way more than it should. Because that's the only grocery store that had it, even though they're not supposed to do that. So most recently, so that's been an ongoing for a couple of years and then most recently. Gas prices, diesel, we're running buses, we're running maintenance trucks, we're running, you know, and so buses. Especially with diesel this year has just been. It's been a lot. You pay 20, $1.50, $2 more for diesel food. So our nutrition program, all the food we buy has just gone up in that respect. Let's see, there was one more, I was going to touch on that, you you asked about utilities. Utilities PG&E gets you every time, you know, and so it's it's too bad, you know, smud's a little cheaper, but. So it's things like that, that it's just, man, really, you just kind of look at things and really? It just seems like everything does. And so when you spend a lot on a certain thing, you notice the cost going up, like custodial supplies. All of a sudden, you're like, man, you know, we have, that's a lot, you know, where you weren't spending that two years ago. And it's not that we're buying more custodial supplies, it's just that they're costing more. So those are some of the main ones that we see.
So revenues, even though they seem to be increasing, are still not really keeping pace with expenses?
Yeah, with inflation at 8%, your COLA at 6.56%, you're paying 8% more on things and only getting 6.56% more revenue.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about utilities. I know that for residential homes and residents. There are, you know, programs where you do like the flat rates, they average, do they do that for businesses? I've not, I've just never looked into it. So I don't know if.
I honestly do not know either. So I can ask and and see, I'm not sure if they do that for businesses or.
Because that might be because it kind of averaged your 12 months for residents. You know, so if something to look into.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Might be able to offset or at least, you know, you'd have your. Not projected, but it would be like the same. Give or take amount every month. Average out for the 12 months.
I will look into that. Yeah, so. I had noted each one, so the. So the 2.1 billion into the base grant that the governor is proposing, if school services is correct, that's an additional 877,000. That would be ongoing at that point because it's into the base grant at that point. And then discretionary, if that was approved, that's only one time. And that would be an additional 4 million based on our ADA projections now. And then the other one, like the TK was, I mean, it was 190,000 if they do the add-on. But if they keep the add-on, that's 190,000 every year. So the biggest one is the discretionary block grant, but like I said, the Senate, for example, the Assembly wants to just give you an extra 15%. And that's it, and that's how they want to do that. So it really depends, those types of things aren't going to be built into our our budget next month. Because they're just too uncertain right now. So once we know, we'll bring budget revisions back like they have in the past.
Another big chunk of money that Nicole mentioned is the expanded learning grant. I think that could be over, was it 4 million? Could be over 4 million. There's a lot of restrictions on how to spend that. But if we were to get that much money when this budget passes, we would be able to. Hire more staff to support students after school and even look at bringing in even credentialed staff possibly that would be working. Until 6 o'clock at night and things like that, support. that would be working um until six o'clock at night and things like that, supporting students. We'd have to work with our unions to negotiate um contracts, work hours, but it would be some new positions we would be able to add. If we really end up with four million, even maybe using some of that money for facilities, we might add a couple portables, especially at Lake Canyon. Lake Canyon is the site, they have the fewest classrooms, no portables. And so we're kind of struggling with how to house those kids in the after-school program. So if we really get over four million dollars, we'll probably add some portables over there.
Quick question about the expanded learning. Is there anything in the morning? I know the, it seems like the campuses are closed till uh like a quarter to eight and a lot, maybe a dozen parents have asked me. Is is next year, are they going to be opening the gates like thirty minutes before school time? You know, pay, it it's very crowded, it's congested, it's hard to get in and get out. If there was a thirty-minute window instead of the fifteen-minute window, it would be an easier drop-off window?
Yeah, that's something I think we need to talk to our principals about. That was one of the things, kind of, there's some things that we learned, I guess, post-COVID, some things that seemed to work well when we were in hybrid, that um our school sites wanted to continue this year. And it has been due to staffing too, yard supervisors have been very difficult to keep staffed this year. And so you need those yard supervisors starting at seven-thirty in the morning if you're going to open your gates. And so that has been a struggle this year, I think all of our sites probably have vacancies right now. So it's something we've heard from parents as well, will you be able to open the gates at seven-thirty next year? So it's something we need to talk about.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item number two, the twenty-twenty-one-twenty-two Fairsite State Preschool Program Self-Evaluation.
Okay, annually, Fairsite State State Preschool needs to certify that an annual plan has been developed and implemented, and this is done um on part of the staff. And I have Kuljeet Nijjar, our Fairsite Administrator that has a PowerPoint, and she's going to highlight the self-evaluation this year.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to share the work that we um that we work on at Fairsite on a daily basis. And I do have a PowerPoint, as Donna has mentioned. Um, you do have in your board packet the um the review documentation that we do present to CDE, but I thought might put it in a a PowerPoint and put some context to the work that we do. So the, as as Donna mentioned, the review is done annually, and it really is around how can we improve our program? At the beginning of the school year, we do meet with our staff to discuss the components of the review and then also review the tra- um the um assessment tools that will be utilized as part of the review process. This is just our mission statement, um kind of guiding our work at Fairsite. And really, the the focus is around um preparing our preschoolers to be kindergarten-ready. This mission statement was um developed in collaboration with the partnering districts under the JBMF grant and really was around focusing on the whole child, how can we develop the whole child as they get ready to go to kindergarten? It focuses on academics, language, social, socialization skills, emotional readiness, and physical readiness. As we have discussed on multiple occasions, um the preschool is funded through various braided um funding sources. Our largest contributor is the California State Preschool Program, but we also get funding through migrant education, uh our JBMF Grant Partnership, Raising Quality Together, which is funded through Sacramento County Office of Education, and then District Supplemental and Concentration Funds. So I thought I'd just kind of just give you a snapshot of who we are at Fairsite, and this truly is just a snapshot. We have eleven teachers, each teacher has at least two IAs. Our special education classrooms have, can have up to five I- five IAs. We also have our readiness staff, and then we also have our office staff and our custodial staff and specialists. We have two speech therapists and a school psychologist. And so this is really just a a snapshot of um some of our educators there. And of course, our students, here's our students. We have four-year-old programs, and we have currently a hundred and twenty-six students in our four-year-old programs. We have thirty-three in our three-year-old programs. Our four-year-old, and and this also includes um our students that are on an IEP that require more than just speech services that are fully included in our four- and three-year-old programs. We do have two uh self-contained SDC programs with a total of nineteen students. And we also serve forty-five um home transport speech service students as well. So, and this, and again, is just preschool, that doesn't even touch on the readiness side of it, so we're a little community. So in terms of the program self-review, we really do uh look at it through the lens of a a continuous improvement cycle. And as part of the data sets that we look at are the desired results for developmental profile, the environmental rating scale, a preschool parent's survey, and district-developed benchmark assessments. So the desired results for developmental profile is a standardized observational tool that teachers complete twice a year, and it covers areas of cognitive development, language literacy, social development, speech and language, fine motor and gross motor skills. Each of the domains are rated on a developmental scale. And um the the range corresponds to kind of those earlier developing skills in that area to more mastered skill sets. The second tool that we use is the environmental rating scale. And this requires our teachers to kind of rate the interactions within their classroom environment. And these interactions can be uh child-to-child, adult-to-child, child with the environment, and their own classroom settings. And these um look at space and furnishing, personal care routines, again, language literacy, learning activities, sentences, and then a- as I mentioned, the interactions. Uh, the third area that we um gather data from is from our parents. So in early kind of spring, we do send home parent surveys. And this um um is a way for us to get feedback from our families on how their experience has been with our program. And it covers information around um, you know, uh was the process for registration easy? Were you provided um uh information on how your child was doing, were you, you know, were there conferences? So it kind of covers a wide range of um areas for us to consider in terms of if we need to provide some improvement for our families. And then the the last area, although it's not necessarily a part of the program self-review, we've kind of added it in. These are our benchmark assessments, these are our Kinder academic readiness skills that we've developed as a district. And so we kind of look at those um assessments as well. So that's right. So when we look at all of this information and kind of aggregate the data, and in collaboration with our staff, we highlight the celebrations, what what did we do well this year? And then we identify areas that um can be targeted for growth. So this year, we saw some growth areas in language and literacy, math, and phonological awareness. Areas that we've identified that we need to continue to kind of strengthen are our social-emotional development. And um within the context of our classrooms, some of our furniture and toys and space needed some kind of replenishing, so those were the kind of two areas that we wanted to focus on for next year. And um and really, it's kind of, you know, when we look at the areas that we did well in, kind of some of the um things that we have been doing over the last two years, we have been partnering with an organization called Be Glad, and they provide our teachers training around guided language acquisition design. It's really focused around developing those oral language skills for preschoolers. Because we don't teach reading as in elementary school teachers reading, we really focus on those language developmental skills. And also um with our early literacy work with Gail Bruce last year, we really targeted phonological awareness, so the rhyming, um the sounds and blending, those kinds of pre-reading skills. And so we definitely saw that um with a targeted focus, our students did actually perform quite well in those areas. As mentioned, the social-emotional and kind of the space and furniture areas are things that we're going to focus on for next year. We did uh implement second step, which is a district-wide social-emotional curriculum that's being implemented district-wide. And we launched it at preschool this year as well. And um I think just kind of, you know, um coming back to some training around the fidelity of implementation for next year. And our staff also participated in the ruler training that um the the entire district kind of went through as well. So those will be those areas that we will continue to work on for next year.
I'm gonna add a little bit of what Kuljeet just said. I, a while ago, I've talked to you about reading and and how that is our most important responsibility as a school system. I don't know if you remember, but I I shared with you that oral language is the foundation for excellent readers, for effective readers, for skilled readers. So what they're doing at the preschool truly is building the foundation that we can build on from Kinder on. So thank you for doing that and focusing on that, Kuljeet.
Yeah. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kuljeet. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to LCAP Goal Two and Item Number One, Cal Schools Survey Results.
Okay. Administering the Healthy Kids surveys is a requirement for districts. It's part of our LCAP process to get feedback from stakeholders. And then also um some state accountability, there's certain questions that we need to ask our students each year to determine safety and wellness and health. And so I wanted to highlight um some of the results. We had these um surveys went out the month of April, students in grades five through eight. All staff and parents were invited to take these surveys, really looking at our school climate, health, and learning. You can see the number of participants that took the survey. We had um almost double the amount of fifth and sixth graders this year that agreed to take the survey. We had fewer, fewer seventh and eighth graders, fewer staff, and fewer parents. What we're going to do next year to hopefully get more staff to take the survey, we are going to ask staff to take the survey on contract time, we're going to provide it. We already have it um on the calendar next year to administer the survey on a fifth Wednesday. And so we're hoping that will help, because it was, it's voluntary to take the survey, they're anonymous, we don't know who took them. But I think it will help if um we ask staff on contract time to please help us and give feedback. So that's a plan for next year. And we just have to continue to try to get the word out to parents. We had about half the parents this year participate in the survey, and I think it's just been, it's been a long year. So um but a few of the highlights, some of the strengths that we saw both in fifth and sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade, reported that we have high expectations um for our students, the adults are really, have high expectations for our learners. And clarity of rules that came up. So we're doing a good job with explaining the rules and the reasons why we have certain rules at our schools. That's from the, from the student perspective, from the staff perspective, we were higher in the area of having caring adult relationships, a positive student learning environment, adequate counseling and support, and that our schools are safe for students and staff. And then parents also rated um our schools high in safety and in communication with parents about school and treating students with respect. Those were some of our our strengths. And then also provided for you um for each of the surveys, a summary of the key indicators for all of the questions that were asked. In in our LCAP, we went into to more detail as well. We had to, we've highlighted in our LCAP some of our areas of improvement based on the survey results.
So half of our eighth graders say school is really boring. Forty-five percent, seventh graders, fifty-six percent of our fifth graders and forty-eight of the sixth graders that responded. But it's interesting because academic motivation is really high, right?
Yeah.
Caring adults in school, very high. But is that just a generational thing? I mean, is that age just like, they understand why they need to be in school, but to them it's boring? Right, is this, is there's not enough YouTube going on, or, I mean, it's, it's like, what is it, what is it they're telling us when they're saying that it's boring? Yeah, absolutely, please, I I just.
Could you pl- please turn? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
This year was very difficult for those specific grade levels returning from COVID. And they were masked until very late in the year. Many of the cooperative learning activities weren't able to take place in the classroom because they were seated, uh sitting um away from each other. They weren't sharing materials, we weren't um, you know, in terms of science experiments and things like that that have been included, robotics, a lot of that was on hold because of COVID. So it it's possible that that's reflected in the scores.
Okay.
Very different, very different classroom setup.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. We talked about this as an admin team. It was only just been the last couple of months that we were able, we've been able to bring a lot of the fun things or the things that kids consider fun, back-to-school field trips. You know, presenters coming on campus, I mean, we were, yes, we were full in person, but it wasn't normal until really just the last couple of months. So we we feel that that's part of the reason why we saw a a high score in boredom.
Okay. Appreciate the reflection.
And I have a question, and it's in regard to sorry, in regards to the middle school, you know, on the front page here, it says, you know, has an adult who really cares about the students. In middle school, it's twenty-one percent, um whereas in elementary, it's forty. And I'm just wondering if that is because, again, going back to the last two years where they've been at home for the most part, and they went from having, you know, elementary, the one teacher that in the classroom that cares and is there to going, you know, to pa- having passing periods and having six different teachers. Is that that a possible reason?
That is def- You know, it's just different when you hit seventh to twelfth grade because they don't have that, I mean, you look at the kids and the teachers and you think, wow, you know, they're making great connections, but it, they're fifty-two-minute connections. They're not all day with them. So, for example, when we got back from um Washington DC, the kids were so happy to see Mrs. Laurie. They, because she was the teacher that went with me that teaches social studies. They were so happy to see her, like, they missed her, even though she was just gone five days. But I don't know that that's always truly reflected in the, I mean, to them, it's it's, it's different, so different than elementary school with that all day, or a good portion of the day with that teacher and building that relationship. They love their teacher, I mean, my daughters, I hear it from her all the time, you know, what it's like to have those kids all day. You know, when she's teaching first grade, it's so much different than seventh or eighth, they're into a lot of other things. They, if you ask them, do you like your teachers, are they nice to you, are they respectful? Do you, those tell you, yes, but it's, I think it's just different when they only have them for a little, six different classes a day and they're moving.
Yeah, well, I think the whole pandemic thing has been hard, because I hear it from the high schoolers, you know, that my- you know, that might not be doing so well in their classes. We're like, well, teachers just don't care. And it's like, well, they do, but they want the kids to make an effort. But they've kind of lost that, the students, because, you know, they had, again, you know, like our ninth graders now, their last full year of school was sixth grade where they had the one teacher that, you know, was there. Like if they weren't doing well, they were helping them one-on-one, you know, and that time now or sudden there, you know, they had very few experiences in middle school, you know, with the sporadic, they ended half with three fourths through the seventh grade. And even the counselors at the high school with the freshmen, they're like, yeah, that last year was that sixth grade year and I think it's felt across the district from
Is and I would
seventh grade, like, like, you know, seventh to twelfth, it's been really difficult.
Definitely. And I would say that masks have, like you watch the kids and I'll ask them when they come into my office to take your mask down because I can't hear you because their mask is below their nose. So I said, it's not serving any purpose right now. But I would still say forty percent of our kids are wearing masks and they just like that. And when you see their, you can't see their face. And so there's something about not being able to connect to their face. You see their eyes and it's, it's amazing because when I drive around town, I always knew the kids went to my school, but I maybe didn't know their name. But now I don't know if the kid goes to my school or not because a lot of them, I don't see their face. It's really, it's really a phenomenon that is been very difficult to deal with.
I'm sure. When I think it's also because I ask, you know, a lot of questions with the high schoolers that I interact with. And I'm like, why are you, why, why you still wear a mask? Like, what's the, you know, purpose? Is it a safety thing? And they're like, I just don't want to be seen. You know, it's like they've had, it's like the, the new trend or they just, it's, I don't know. I, I, I understand.
A new something.
Yes.
They're phenomenal. I don't know what we call it. Braces, acne, they've told me everything, you know, I have braces.
Yeah, maybe it covers it all up and they, because they're self-conscious because this is, you know, the seventh to probably what freshman-ish years are like very self-conscious braces, acne, and they can cover it up with the mask and just not be seen.
It's given them that, you know, yeah.
And Gracie, I want to add to that. I, I think that, that the harm we have caused these children, it's going to be a while before we see it. And the fact that they don't want to be seen.
Yeah.
Especially coming to middle school when they start to socialize outside of just their small group. It's, it's going to take us a little while to even identify what is the need for us to even attempt to find a solution.
No, I agree with that as well.
So it's gonna take a while.
Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to Item H now, Routine Matters, New Business. We have before us the Consent Calendar. Anything you want to highlight there, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I would like to highlight a retirement. Brenda Stanley is retiring after seventeen years in the district. She has served seventeen years as a yard supervisor at Marengo Ranch. She did serve in our district's very beginning seventeen years ago, just for a short time, maybe three, four months as a cashier in our food services department. But the majority, sixteen and a half years, she's been a yard supervisor at Marengo. She, I remember she was there when I was an assistant principal at Marengo and she did the crossing guard out there on Corillian. She still does. Wow, that's amazing. So, yeah.
That's about six of my kids I think she put up with. Amazing. And then anything else?
Yes, we have a couple of donations. We do. Lake Canyon has a donor choose donated books and art supplies valued at almost fifteen hundred dollars for Nicole Godinius's classroom. And then a PG&E Giving Fund donated three hundred dollars for site use. And then for River Oaks Costco, a campaign by Frontstream donated a hundred and thirty-six dollars for site use.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no questions, then do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 212.308, the Consent Calendar? Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve Item Number 212308, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Grace Malsen?
Hi.
Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to Item 212.310. And that is a Board Action Regarding Stipulated Expulsion, Number 2122-05. Do I have a motion to approve Item 212.310?
I'll make a motion to approve Action Item 212.310.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malsen to approve Item Number 212310, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Wesley Cagle, if you could please turn your microphone on.
Green. Oh, I thought it was on. All right. Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimous, or excuse me, the action passes unanimously.
Okay. Yeah, I see the little green light down there. Yeah. They're sneaky that way. They're not as good as our microphones, but we'll do, we'll, we'll manage. So now we'll go ahead and move on to Item 212.311. And that is Board Consideration of Approval of Universal Pre-Kindergarten Planning and Implementation Grant Program. It is getting late.
There you go. The 2021-22 State Budget set aside dollars for the universal, it's UPK, Universal Pre-Kindergarten. UPK, the definition is combines preschool with transitional kindergarten. And so our district was awarded approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so we were awarded, I think we've received Nicole about thirteen thousand so far, thirty thousand, I believe, thirty thousand so far. But with the dollars, we have another plan to submit to you. And so that's what I'm bringing to you this evening. And with this planning grant, it can be used to create or expand state preschool or TK programs. We can use it for planning costs, hiring and recruitment, staff training, professional development, materials and supplies, for example. You know, right now, Colleen, it's working with transitional kindergarten teachers, preparing those TK classrooms for the new teachers that'll be coming over. And what I wanted to do is just highlight a few areas of the, of the template that, that we completed. And then if you have any questions after that. It's a thirty-one page report. You know, it's, you know, if it's for the state, you know, it's going to be lengthy. But it includes recommended questions that we could answer and then required questions. And we answered all the recommended questions. We've spent so much time working with the preschool and, and, and really that transition with transitional kindergarten that I felt like that we did have pretty comprehensive knowledge of what, what we're doing. And then all the work with Fair Sight, you know, moving transitional kindergarten to Fair Sight. The required questions really were dropdowns. So I just, you know, multiple choice, but just some of the key areas, projected enrollment. We know that currently we have sixty-three TK. We're hoping we get eighty. And then by 2025, 26 will be universal. We're looking at one hundred and forty as our ending enrollment, hopefully. Ratio is one to twelve. All of the state says twenty-four to one for class size. We know that in Galt. We still have the twenty to one rate. Class sizes includes TK. So that will be one teacher and it'll be an instructional assistant there for the entire three hours and twenty minutes. The next area is focusing on services. There'll be four-part date classes, TK classes that offer, we're not offering full-day TK, but we are offering part-day. The state doesn't require full day for transitional kindergarten, but we must offer a full-day programming. And that comes in with our expanded learning program because after when the AM TK gets out at eleven-thirty, there'll be care for those students until five o'clock in the evening. And likewise, when the PM students get out around three o'clock, there'll still be some service after school. We'll have two-state preschool full-day classes, two-part day classes, and then it includes our children with disabilities. Typically through full inclusion like we have this year or some mainstreaming. The second area is family engagement and partnerships. And I, I just feel that, and we've reported just to you, you know, over the last year, just of what we do at the Fair Sight School Readiness Center and how we look in and prioritize parent needs. We have the preschool TK. We'll be offering the Dual Language Immersion Program this coming year. We have a home visiting program for those zero to three families. We offer a player, a parent and child playgroup for children zero to three. The zero is for pregnant family, for pregnant moms, of course. And the School Readiness Center provides a wide range of school readiness services. That's our bilingual community outreach assistance. Our new first five coordinator, Monica Garcia oversees that. And it's a range of services that they do at Fair Sight. And then also they expand into the elementary schools. A lot of parent feedback, you, Colleen talked about the parent survey. And on top of that, they have a monthly preschool advisory, advisory committee. Lots of participation from pre-kindergarten parents and DAC, and D-LAC especially. And then we always do parent listening circles at Fair Sight every year to kind of get their feedback as well. Workforce recruitment and professional learning, working with HR to really recruit teachers. We work with San Joaquin, San Joaquin Teachers College. When we, to recruit, we're working with the Sacramento County Office of Education. There's an educator, an educator development grant that they're working on that'll help provide training to help pre-kindergarten teachers get their credentials to become TK teachers. Curriculum, we already are using Houghton-Mifflin Big Day for pre-K and preschool. And transitional kindergarten will be using the District Adopted Benchmark Program. In facilities and services, and I think that we brought to you some photos in January of all the upgrades and things that we've been doing at Fair Sight. But it also for safety, it includes complete fencing around all of the areas where we have students, gates that are locked from the outside at about fifteen minutes after school, children come in. Children are supervised at all times on the campus when they're outside of the classroom, regardless if it's the restroom or going into the multipurpose room. And plans to, for transportation, I know transportation has been a tough issue this year. But what we'd like to plan to do is for families who live over on the east side, we really are looking at ways to provide some morning transportation to help get them to preschool. The other thing that we're doing is that for transitional kindergarten and preschool, the other thing we're doing is we're going to begin, I believe, is it ten minutes later at eight-ten instead of eight o'clock? So families will be able to drop their kids off at elementary and get them over to Fair Sight in time. Our, all of our preschool students will have access to meals. There'll be a breakfast will be served in the classroom this coming year. And then they'll also have lunch at, it'll be a lunch for the PM students or a snack. Let's see, the last few pages, there was an optional section that, because we're overachievers, we decided to do, that's the technical assistant questions. And so we completed that part. And the additional deeper planning questions, we were able to, to answer some of them. But I kind of wanted to let you know is, is that besides and beyond the UPK, Universal Pre-Kindergarten, the state is really moving towards a P3, which is pre-K through grade three. And they're looking at it as a developmental literacy span. And so what we're going to be seeing in the next few years, a professional development, a lot, even credentialing, perhaps, you know, credential that would teach, you know, pre-K through grade three. So there was some planning questions there. There was a lot of information. Did you have any questions specifically about the, the template?
I had one question about Item Seven on Page Thirteen. So that's in the focus area, A, Vision and Coherence. Describe how the LAE plans to ensure the inclusion of students with disabilities in UPK classrooms who will be involved in the process. Because it talks about meeting their IEP needs, but I, my understanding is normally an IEP isn't started until kindergarten? Is that correct, Colleen? Okay, so they wouldn't be in an infant toddler program at that point? They could actually start an IEP at age three then? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that answers, okay. Well, that, that explains that question then. I was just curious about that because I didn't think that at that age, kids would typically have an IEP started. So I was just want to make sure nobody's falling through the cracks there.
Colleen, could you put your microphone on, please?
Yeah, Ron doesn't need one.
A child, when they turn three, they are the, it is the district's responsibility to provide any special education services. So we work closely with students that are kind of in the infant toddler programs that have an IFSP, which is kind of the toddler version of an IEP and make sure that prior to their third birthday that they've already been assessed. So as soon as they turn three, they can seamlessly, you know, be placed into whatever programs that they need at the whole district.
Okay. Well, thank you for answering that.
We have, we have, I think, almost two and a half speech teachers at the pre-kindergarten level. And we saw that forty-five of those children are transported from home that have IEPs for speech. We also are moving our special education, we're moving them towards the morning because we really want to make sure they have that inclusion and mainstreaming time. And in the afternoon, they found out that children are tired and
Adults.
Just, and they're, they're little and they're tired and they have special needs. So we are actually, I think we're opening up another whole classroom, just so we can have those kiddos come in the morning with more opportunities to be with their gen ed peers.
So how many students are we serving in SDC right now?
We have nineteen that are self-contained.
Okay.
Of those nineteen, we do have, I'd say, at least seven of them that mainstream in and then preschool classroom. So they go in as appropriate for what they need are. And on top of that, we do have seven students that are fully included that are on an IEP above and beyond just speech. So those are our full inclusion students. So we definitely have a tiered system in terms of services for students on an IEP. And we'll continue that next year. And we really do look at each child's individual needs. And if we can push them into gen ed with support, we definitely do that. That's really kind of our starting point.
Thank you.
I have an odd question. Just because when I was told many years ago that as far as, so I guess I should, should back up, I apologize. So this is for the already diagnosed special needs students. Is that correct? And, and the reason I ask is because I was told years ago at the kindergarten first grade age that they will not assess as far as like speech impediments, dyslexia, like those types of disabilities until they're a little bit later, like second, third grade. So has this changed? Because I
Under the law, you have an obligation to assess if you suspect there's a disability. There's no hard yes or no, you can.
Okay. Okay, I
We have quite a that have required IEPs kind of at grade twenty-three.
Well, no, that's, I think, it's wonderful if you get the diagnosis that young and work with them and, you know, have them mainstreamed when they enter into elementary. I mean, I think it's fabulous. So that's why I just wanted some clarification. I was like, I, I didn't know they could do IEPs that young. So thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
No more questions? All right. In that case, then, do I have a motion to approve Item 212.311? In that case, then, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three one one?
I'll make a motion to approve two one two point three one.
Three one one.
Oh, three and one, sorry, I already crossed it. Three and one.
Thank you, Grace. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve item number two one two three one one, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva.
Hi.
Wesley Cagle.
Hi.
Casey Raboy.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
And thank you, Donna, for taking the lead on that plan.
Okay, now on to agenda item two one two point three one two. And that is board consideration of approval of Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Bus Driver Trainee Agreement and Salary.
So we've, we've talked about the different challenges that the Transportation Department has experienced this year. And we know there's a nationwide shortage of bus drivers. One of the things that our supervisor said was most common was when people would come in with, to inquire about it. When they found out that the eighty hours required for the classroom and driving was, would be non-paid. It was just kind of, well, you know, I, I can't go that long without, you know, being paid. So we would lose a lot of people. We already pay for the, up to five hundred for their actual obtaining their certificate. And we do have a hiring bonus, but what we'd like to propose for board approval is that. If we do have driver trainees, that we would pay them minimum wage for the eighty hours that's required. To get the certificate. If they are successful, the next page is a short agreement that they would need to sign. We're asking for a twelve month commitment. That if we have an open permanent bus driving position at either one of the Galt districts. That they would commit to us for the twelve months to work for us afterward.
Does legal counsel review the agreement?
No, legal counsel has not reviewed this agreement.
What is any type of if, ramification if they were to break the contract?
The only thing you could do is try to recoup funds that, that they had received. The, the, what was it, thirteen hundred dollars or so for their training? You know, you could take legal action to try to recoup those funds from them. That's really all you can do.
Probably cost almost that much for legal review, right? So, okay.
It's just an attempt to try to.
Right.
You know, get more people to.
To commit. Okay.
Understandable, but my concern was just the shortage is, you know, you get six months in and be like, hmm, and then we've put this money. You know, for their training, but.
Yeah.
We need, we need drivers.
We do, we need drivers, we need good drivers.
Good drivers.
And so.
Trained drivers.
And we have reached out, we, we know there's some other districts that are doing something similar to this, offering to pay for the training.
May, maybe another bonus, like if, after they stay for the year. The bonuses as well.
Yeah, we have a hiring bonus right now. It's tiered, so you get five hundred and then upon your, I think it's six months, another five hundred. And then your twelve, upon completion of your first year is the other five hundred.
Okay, so there's.
We do have, and we pay up to five hundred for them to obtain the certificate as well. So this was like the missing link of the things we're already paying for. To try to, hopefully, they, they, you know, want to go through the training if they're going to be paid for it versus not. And, and like Lois said, there are other districts like Elk Grove Unified and stuff that do pay for that. And have that kind of position advertised as a, a paid, you know, kind of thing.
And that eighty hours of training is that, or up to eighty hours of training, is that like a self-paced asynchronous? Or is that something they can do like in a classroom in two weeks and get it done? What's, how is it typically accomplished?
So it's thirty hours of classroom and fifty behind the wheel. And Carrie said it takes about three months to get through all of that with the instructor per trainee.
Okay.
Just the average of completion time.
Any other questions or comments? All right, then, I'll go ahead and move to approve agenda item two one two point three one two. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
You have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two one two three one two, seconded by Casey Raboy. Grace Malson.
Hi.
Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Wesley Cagle.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now on to item two one two point three one three. That is board consideration of approval of agreement between the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District. And Bobo Construction Incorporated for Greer Elementary Classroom Sinks Project.
Yes, thank you. So we would like to this summer install classroom sinks in sixteen portable classrooms at Greer Elementary. That they've just never have had sinks. And this was design build, hard bid project. It was not a lease leaseback like the board is used to in the past. It wasn't large enough of a project to really warrant those kinds of contracts. And so we put it out for bid. We had to put it out for a month in order to get a couple bids. We did, we ended up with two. But Bobo Construction was the lowest bid and they successfully met all of the requirements. Pre-qualified insurance, bond, everything to, to be able to bid and to take the job. The dollar amount, the construction cost is five hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars for this. We would like to start it as soon as school is out, June ninth, June tenth. They have committed to being able to complete the work before school starts. We're asking them to be done by August first. We would use SR three funds for this. It's a, it's an allowable expense due to COVID. And needing to have for hygiene purposes, washing your hands in the classroom. And so we are asking for board approval to get started on this project.
I was just curious, just curious about one thing. And, and so the sixteen sinks, does this, does this include or does, is there a requirement? To create any new infrastructure? You know, water lines coming in, drainage going out? Or are they able to just tie into what already exists?
They're able to tie into what exists, but there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, plumbing that will be done behind the portables. We have to, they will have to trench to get to the existing sewer and water lines out on the playground. So they've come up with a method where it'll be limited concrete cutting in front of the portables. Most of the work will be done behind the portables, which is dirt. But yeah, they have to tie in, they're tying into existing.
Okay.
Water and sewer lines.
All right, I've never, I do not recall this company since I've been on the board. So I'm sure you guys did your due diligence and looked, looked through. Were they, okay.
They have been around for a long time, twenty plus years, maybe thirty years, a family owned business in Elk Grove. We did, we checked, we did some reference checks and there is an extensive process they have to go through to be pre-qualified. They have bid for us on some of our lease leaseback projects. It's not the first time that they have submitted a proposal to work with us. Yeah.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three one three?
I'll make the motion to approve two one two point three one three.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two three one three, seconded by Wesley Cagle. Tom Silva.
Hi.
Grace Malson.
Hi.
Casey Raboy.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is item two one two point three one four. And that is board consideration of approval of resolution number sixteen. Authorizing the filing of documents under the State School Facility Program Applications Received Beyond Bond Authority List. Explain that.
Yes, thank you. So this was, this is related to Prop fifty one where there was nine billion dollars. To go towards facility funds, modern, mainly modernization. And so they have, or they've accounted for those nine billion dollars already. And so if we want to apply for state facility funds, we go on what's called beyond bond authority. And it's looking like the governor is going to be giving more money to facilities. And so we're in it, we're hopeful that we would be funded with this application for River Oaks. Where River Oaks is eligible, even though the nine billion dollars currently is spent or accounted for. We're trying to get on a list for future money that the state might allocate. And basically what this resolution states is that there's no guarantee. So if, go ahead, do your project, which we already did, the River Oaks project, we're kind of asking for a reimbursement. But you, it's, the board is required to adopt a resolution stating that you understand there's no guarantee that you'll receive these funds. And we're taking the application back. We have already submitted an application for River Oaks for a little over a million dollars. And we are in the, the funded list for that. But what happened was the final project ended up being more than the one point two that we asked for. It actually ended up being two point seven when we were done. And so we're kind of re submit, we're submitting a new application to try to get that difference is what we're doing.
Any questions about that? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item two one two point three one four?
I'll make the motion to approve two point three one four.
Thank you, Wes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve item number two one two three one four, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva.
Hi.
Grace Malson.
Hi.
Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next item is two one two point three one five. And this is a first reading of Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Board Policy. Administrative Regulations and Board Bylaws. So anything you'd like to highlight there?
Sure, we'll go ahead and start with Business Services.
So we have two on, on my list. That's the thirty two thirty and the forty one forty one and forty two forty one. So the thirty two thirty, the Board Policy and Administrative Reg. This is just a board policy about conforming with uniform guidance. Which is basically the, the guidance on how you spend your federal funds in realms of procurement, conflict of interest. Allowable costs, kind of your guidebook to spend your federal funds. And so we're just putting the official board policy into place. We've essentially always followed these regs, but just never had the official policy. And so when they updated the policy for some new federal regulations, we just decided to go ahead and implement the policy as well. Or good measure. So that's that one. And then the other two are the Board Policy and Administrative Reg. For work stoppage. So it's, it was basically some verbiage on when employees are on strike. And so the new government code now prohibits a public employer from discontinuing their. Their employer contribution to the health care coverage. So our policy said that we may discontinue that if you are on, basically on strike. And so the government codes now say you can't do that. And so we just had to update a portion of our policy. And that's it on those two. You have any questions?
Okay, in Ed Services, we have just some revisions that because of new law. And so on the first one, Board Policy five one 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 is on admission. It's updated to, for consistency with the new law, which revises the time span for transitional kindergarten. And just kind of also, the last, our other, our board policy previous was quite short. But kind of tagging on to the next one, the for education for homeless children. In the Board Policy for Admission, just that we immediately must enroll any student that is identified as homeless. We immediately enroll them in school regardless of paperwork that they have. The next one is education for homeless, homeless children. And that was updated also with new law. And something that we do need to work on, as I was looking on our website, on our district page. It's under Educational Services and it's Child Attendants and Welfare. And it's where we have some information on homeless. And we need to, we, we have a page, it's on our webpage, but it's not readily identifiable. And I do believe we need to do some work with that. We really need to be able to update it and give more information to families who may be experiencing homelessness. The other thing that it does is that it, we, it names our homeless liaison. And it'll be on our webpage. And also in our document, Sophie Lore is our social worker at Greer. And she is currently our homeless, designated homeless liaison for our district.
Under curriculum, we have Board Policy sixty one forty three. And this policy basically has been updated to reflect the reassurance that all children will have access to core. Curriculum, supplemental and exploratory courses. Regardless of their background, the new policies are easier to read, they're less fragmented. And they now include things like career exploration for the elementary children and CTE courses for middle school. As well as world language, or language is something that we didn't have before.
And the last two board policies, we also already have these board policies, but both of them, new law has been adopted. The first one on nondiscrimination in employment. The new law really outlines the characteristics that prohibit discrimination. In certain areas, hiring, compensation, taking adverse employment actions such as termination. And welcome conduct really outlines those areas now. And it also sets a four year requirement for maintaining certain employment records. Related to workplace discrimination, harassment and any complaints that have been filed with CDE. For fair employment and housing. And then for agenda and meeting materials, we do most of this already. Especially related to posting our agenda on the website, electronic copies. The statement on student wellness really goes, or well-being really is in our LCAP goals. So we're really doing most of this already. It's just not reflected in our current board policy. And so we want to update the board policy to reflect what we're doing with our agenda and our meeting, meetings.
Any questions or comments on that?
Just out of curiosity, how many homeless students do we have in our district?
I need to find out that question. I was, when I was looking it over and, and right before our board meeting. And I would, that, that question came to me and it was a little bit too late. Because our student information system technician went home. But, you know, I will bring that back for next meeting because I would like to know the same thing. I do not believe that we have a, a large number of homeless students, but I'll have that for you.
And I have a question. Sort of has to do with our homeless student population. I know that McCaffrey, they have the Wellness Center and they have the clothing closet, correct? Yes. I know that the high school does not have a clothing closet. I'm curious if our elementary schools have a closing clothing closet.
I'm not sure. Are, can any of our principals answer that?
And, you know, I'm not talking about like, like the lost and found types, you know, like an actual, you know, if we have a homeless student. Or somebody that is in need of, of clothing. They kind of go shopping, because I know that's how it is at McCaffrey, is that, my memory serves me correctly, right? Where students can kind of go in there and shop.
We have one at River Oaks. It is a, a project of one of the teachers.
It is a, a project of one of the teachers. But I think at all of our schools in, um, either in the, the health assistance office or other places, we do have extra clothing for children that come in. Um, we have jackets, those kinds of things. If somebody comes and they don't have a coat, it's a shirt, just to try to provide and support those children.
Fabulous. I just think that's a need.
Yeah.
That, I mean, on all campuses.
Something that, you know, we, we, for years at the Fair Sight School Readiness Center, we had a clothing closet that all of our social workers kind of helped put together. It was run by community members. And then as we started to expand, and they're still doing it, I, I believe that's taken over by the churches. It's just not at Fair Sight, but, you know, families could go over at any time and, and go through that clothing closet. It's an idea, especially if we look at, you know, mini centers of wellness at our, at our school sites.
And that's who, kind of where I was going with that, you know, because there's, you know, the, the wellness center that, you know, McCaffrey, that the McCaffrey Advisory Committee started, you know, a few years back. That's now up and running. And I've seen the clothing closet there and it's fabulous. And then I know we've talked about the mini wellness centers on our campuses, you know, and, um, you know, it'd be nice to, especially, you know, when, um, you know, parents are going through and, you know, donating, you know, because I try to donate like any old clothes back into our community. I know there's a church that actually does a, um, in August, they do like backpacks and like kids can go shopping, you know, for new clothes. And I try to donate there, but if I can donate back into our actual school, into our student actual population, um, you know, and other parents can do that as well. Instead of, it's
Good idea. You know, I'll bring that up and our principals are here and they're hearing that idea too. And I'll bring it up to our social workers as we have more and more, hopefully we're, we're going to have an additional support with mental health clinicians that, you know, that it would be a good time for. Maybe our social workers or counselors could. And with, uh, what they're doing at McCaffrey, Lori Beiser and Raquel Luna might be able to kind of give some tips on that.
And it might even be easier on families since, you know, um, like, like I said, you know, the churches that do it in town is great, but it's only around when school starts. But again, in January, when you need that winter jacket, um, you know, you're not thinking about it in August when it's a hundred and six degrees.
You know, I, I can say that our social workers really do kind of, they know that, and parents reach out to social worker, their social site, social workers. And so I'm just very confident that our social workers also, when they, when they know that families have a need, that they work together to make sure, and they're all nodding their heads that they work to make sure that those families' needs are taken care of individually. But that's a, that is a good thought. So we'll take that idea to our social workers also.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, on to item, uh, item I, public comments for topics not on the agenda. Do we have any requests for public comments?
No, Mr. Silva, we do not have any requests for public comment at this time.
Thank you. And then on to item J, pending agenda items. We still have school district properties, this isn't a pending agenda item. Is there any other suggestions or requests to add to that?
Mr. Silva, I just had someone raise their hand online to address the board.
Sure, let's go back to item I. And this is for an item not on the agenda or did they stipulate?
I believe it's for an item not on the agenda. And this public comment comes from Stevie Chody. Cho.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say that the wellness idea was, um, I thought was fabulous. Um, having a wellness center at each school, because sometimes transportation can be hard for people and having it on-site would be wonderful. So I thought that was a great idea. Earlier, uh, I did think it was concerning that, um, on the topic of boredom, uh, speaking about masks being the problem was, it seemed like that was one of the primary reasons. But, um, there were some other good possibilities thrown out there. I just thought that was kind of concerning that that was, hmm, like, from what I heard, it seemed like more than fifty percent of the issue. I, I think that a little more, uh, reflection on to why kids are bored, um, in class is needed. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, so then, uh, back to pending agenda items. Is there anything, uh, any of the board would like to see added in addition to item one?
I just wanted to ask, Lois, has, uh, any of the out, outside, uh, youth organizations approached you about like, like I say, I, I'm thinking about soccer organization in town, about using like that Jennings property to maybe like build soccer fields? Since, since there's such a shortage of fields in this town.
The only conversation that, the only one that I've been approached by for possibly using just Jennings field would be the city for possibly expanding their baseball field out there. But other than the city, no private organizations or, or no one else. No. Yeah.
Be perfect for
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for item J then? All right, well then if not, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much and have a good night.